Standing room.
You had her in a carrier and I said, when she was born? And you're like, because it was in October. She born in September? Crazy.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to call to order this February 16th, 2023, regular board meeting of the School District of Haverford Township, and to welcome those of you who have joined us here in the Oakmont Administration Building, and to those who are watching our broadcast live on our YouTube stream. This meeting is also being recorded for later viewing. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with a reason and justice for all.
And now we will read our district's mission and goals. The mission of the School District of Haverford Township is to educate and to inspire a community of lifelong learners who become well-rounded global citizens.
The district, the 2020 to 2025 district goals are social, emotional wellness, prepare contemporary citizens, and diversity and inclusion.
Thank you. And next we'll have our roll call. Ms. Martha Q., our Board Secretary, has largely lost her voice, but we'll try to keep up with her.
Dr. Crispin.
Here.
Mr. Feinberg. Dr. King.
Here.
Dr. Larson. Dr. McKay.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
Here.
Ms. Vitale.
Here.
Ms. Snodgrass.
Here.
Ms. Weedeman.
Here. And Mr. Feinberg and Dr. Larson are out for personal reasons. The next item of the agenda is to, as far as official minutes, I will accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the February 2nd, 2023, regular public board meeting.
Being moved.
Vitale's second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, under recommended action, it just says, February 2nd, 2022.
It does say 2022, yeah. We will go back to the one two weeks prior. Any other comments or discussion on the minutes? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. And tonight, we have just one of our student reporters from the high school, Erin Coyle.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to present on behalf of the students at Haverford High School. The atmosphere at the high school is an all-time high, as so many fun events are happening and our amazing athletics are dominating the Central League. As many of you know, the high school lost internet connection last week. Although one may think this would cause dramatic effects in the high school, all of the teachers quickly adapted and helped seamlessly transition coursework from online to on paper. I found it refreshing to work with a pencil and paper again, but I definitely am happy to have Canvas back and working again. Last Friday, the Wing Bowl took place on behalf of Best Buddies. This is an annual tradition at the high school where students and teachers are elected to compete in a wing-eating competition. Usually, the champion title bounces between the teachers and students year to year, this year being a student who ate 22 wings. Personally, I would not be able to eat nearly half of that, so that's very impressive. It was really entertaining to watch it, and it's really great to know that all the money is going to a great cause. Haverford's winter athletics are now in their postseason and dominating. The girls' and boys' swim team battled tough and placed second in the Central League. The track team is breaking personal records and dominating the nation. The girls' relay now holds the second fastest time in the nation in the distance medley relay, and the boys' relay holds the first best time in the state. Our girls' basketball team has gone undefeated with a record of 23-0 and just recently gained the title of Central League Champions. Our cheer team also took a trip down to Florida last week for Nationals and came home with a silver medal and the title of second place in the entire nation. Our boys' basketball team has a record of 10-12, and they've struck up a lot of attention with their last-minute victory over Garnet Valley last week. Many of you might have seen the video, but it was an amazing last-minute shot. They play this Friday at district playoffs at Tenet High School. Singing Valentine's took place on Tuesday and definitely were a highlight of my week. I personally invested in eight singing Valentines for my friends, and it never failed to put a smile on my face seeing our amazing choir sing and dance around them, saying love songs. This is such an amazing tradition, and I'm already planning for who I will surprise with next year. Didn't keep it much of a surprise this year, but I'm ready for next year. We are no longer at the beginning of the new semester, and my classes are flying through their content. I've recently started US Government and Anatomy and Physiology. I especially love the organtines that we're doing in anatomy, where we are assigned an organ system, and we had to create a cute witty valentine to hand out to everyone that was associated with that system. So my system was the integumentary system, which is like the skin, hair, and nails. So mine was like, are my sweat glands acting up, or is it hot in here? Or one of them was like, I want you under my skin. Like, they're really cute and witty like that, so I found that a lot of fun. On Friday, the high school has a half-day and a long weekend, which we will have a wellness block tomorrow also. My friends and I chose frisbee again because it's always so fun to run around, and hoping weather permits, it's gonna be nice and warm. I'm also really excited for the long weekend to be productive and get my work for the upcoming week out of the way. It's refreshing to be able to clear my schedule while also being able to devote my full attention to my work. I hope you all enjoy the rest of your week, and thank you for allowing me to present. Go forwards.
So much great stuff. Thank you, Erin. And now I will turn it to our Assistant Superintendent Jen Saxa for the superintendent report.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Weedeman. I unfortunately do not have any good Valentines like that to share, but thank you for doing so. I do have a couple of remarks this evening. First, I just want to note that on tonight's agenda, you will see the Health and Safety Plan is before the board for reapproval. The only reason that this is on our agenda is that the state requires it be reapproved every six months, and we're at that time period. We have not made any changes to the plan. Dr. Roushi did review the plan, the contents of it, at our last public board meeting on February 2nd, and this evening is when the board is being asked to approve it again. I also want to recognize that last week was School Counseling Week, which was celebrated in all of our schools. If you don't know, our school counselors are an integral part of our educational process. They work in partnership with our teachers, with our families, and of course, with our students to help them explore their abilities, strengths, interests, talents, and what they need to achieve success in school, as well as in career and perhaps college. As a little plug, I do urge you to check out the Elementary Counselors Connection newsletter that goes out each month. It's on our website, and it's a tremendous source for a variety of resources, and it gets published and helps students and families to navigate school and life as well. So we wanted to recognize the work of our school counselors with the School Counseling Week last week. And now, on to what will likely be the most fun part of the evening. Tonight, we welcome Chatham Park students and their school counselor, Mrs. Catherine Malam, who is also our Counseling Department co-chair, to present about Chatham Park's Conflict Mediation Program.
Thank you, Jen, and good evening. When the elementary counseling program was relatively new, I sought a solution for the high number of recess conflicts that required intervention from me and the teachers. I wasn't immediately able to address every conflict. And instructional time was being lost after recess as teachers tried to prevent conflicts from escalating. I then learned of an elementary peer mediation program developed by the New Mexico Center for Dispute Resolution and decided to pilot the program at Chatham Park. At that time, the news of Delaware County featured a wonderful article noting that Chatham Park students were trying an experiment in conflict resolution. That so-called experiment has lasted 30 years. While all elementary students learn about conflict and conflict resolution strategies in their bi-weekly SEL lessons taught by their school counselors, the Conflict Mediation Program trains 4th and 5th graders to be mediators who are present at recess for younger students and mediate conflicts in real time. The program has served as a model both for schools outside of the district and for other district elementary schools at various times over the years. Tonight, we celebrate the 30th anniversary of Chatham Park's Conflict Mediation Program. What does it take to sustain a program for 30 years? It takes teachers, especially 4th and 5th grade teachers, who have helped identify prospective mediators, offered me space in their classrooms for training during lunch and recess, and are committed both to developing student leaders and helping younger students learn to resolve conflicts peacefully. It takes the support of three principals with whom I have worked over that time, who have recognized the program's role in promoting a safe and positive school climate. It takes the parents of mediators who enthusiastically allow their children to participate in the program. But most of all, it has taken the hundreds of students over these three decades who agreed to be mediators, developed the necessary skills, and have worked patiently with our younger children. Perhaps there is no better example of our students' commitment than this. I asked my 22 5th grade mediators for volunteers to come present tonight. I hoped for five, and I have 13 here with me to tell and show you what our program is all about. And I believe that this will not be the last time you see these student leaders recognized at a school board meeting. I hope you enjoy our presentation.
Hi, I'm Katie Luther. To be chosen as a mediator, first you have to be nominated by our teachers and peers at the end of the 3rd and 4th grade. In order to be a mediator, we need to be caring, responsible, trustworthy, good speakers, and strong problem-solvers. Every year, there are about 34 mediators, 12 4th graders, and 22 5th graders. Before becoming a mediator, we have six hours of training with Ms. Malon and September, mostly during our recess. I wanted to be a mediator, so I like problem-solving, no matter whether it's big or small, and I like helping people.
Hello, I'm Brett Tullman. In the training, we learn and memorize a mediation process. The training teaches us how to be active listeners, to stay neutral, and what to do when a disputant breaks the rules or can't solve the problem. We do many role plays, taking turns being mediators and disputants. As mediators, we don't solve the problem for the disputants, but we help them get a solution that is fair, clear, and realistic. We've learned that while the conflicts may not seem like a big deal to us, they are important to the disputants. Mediation can help keep those conflicts from escalating. Mediation is confidential unless we hear that something is unsafe, and then we tell Ms. Malon. What I liked about the training is the role-playing, because it gave me an understanding of mediation and gave me better strategies to solve problems.
Hi, I'm Tyler Youngman. After the training, we are out on duty with a partner once a week for 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade recess. We wear red pennies with peace signs on them and walk around the playground. Sometimes, kids come up to us. Sometimes, a recess monitor sends them to us. And sometimes, we see a conflict and ask if the kids want to mediate. Usually, the disputants figure out how to solve the problem, but sometimes, they will interrupt each other or don't want to mediate. Unfortunately, if one disputant doesn't want to mediate, we can't help them solve the problem. As a mediator, I feel good about myself because I feel needed. I feel like if I wasn't there for the little kids, then they wouldn't be able to solve their problems, and recess wouldn't be as fun and peaceful as it is right now.
Hi, I'm Jackson Hoy. After each mediation, we complete a report form about the mediation. Here's our data since October. We have mediated a total of 94 conflicts, 33 in 1st grade, 36 in 2nd grade, and 25 in 3rd grade. 91% of the conflicts were resolved. Since 1992, there have been more than 2,000 mediations. Now, we're gonna do two mediation role-plays. In the first role-play, the mediators will be Anastasia Veen and Leila Bear. The disputeants will be Sadie Donaldson and Matt Rosenbaum. In our second role-play, Katie Elias and Sophia Clady will be the mediators, and Molly Fleming and Hayes Gill will be the disputeants.
Hi, I'm Leila, and I'm a mediator.
Hi, I'm Anastasia, and I'm a mediator.
We'd like to help solve your problem. Do you agree to mediate?
Yes. First, we need to agree to four rules.
To not interrupt. Do you agree?
Yes. No name-calling. Do you agree? Yes.
To tell the truth. Do you agree?
Yes. And to try and solve the problem. Do you agree? Yes.
You each have a turn to tell your side of the story. So tell me what happened and how you feel.
So, we were playing vet, and she wasn't letting me be the vet.
And how does that make you feel?
Sad.
So, when you play vet, she never lets you be the vet, and you feel sad?
Tell me what happened and how do you feel?
The only reason I don't let him be the vet is because he bosses me around and makes me a chihuahua when I want to be a labradoodle.
And how does that make you feel?
Frustrated.
So you feel frustrated when he makes you be a chihuahua and you want to be a labradoodle?
So, how do you think you could solve this problem?
Maybe I could let her be the dog she wants?
And what can you do to solve this problem?
Let him be the vet sometimes.
How will you decide who is going to be vet first?
We could play rock, paper, scissors.
So when you play, you will be the vet first. So, but you also agree to let her be the dog she wants?
And you agree to let him be the vet sometimes?
You both agree?
Congratulations, you have solved your problem.
Hi, I'm Sophia, and I'm a mediator.
Hi, I'm Katie, and I'm a mediator.
We'd like to help you solve your problem. Do you agree to mediate?
Yes.
First, you'll have to agree to four rules. To not interrupt. Do you agree?
Yes.
No name-calling. Do you agree?
Yes.
To tell the truth. Do you agree?
Yes.
And to try to solve the problem. Do you agree?
Yeah.
You will each have a turn to tell your side of the story. So tell me what happened and how do you feel?
Well, whenever we play tag, he never admits that he's it whenever I tag him.
Okay, and how does that make you feel?
Upset and outraged.
So you feel outraged because whenever you tag him and tag, he never admits that he's it? Tell me what happened and how you feel.
When we play tag, she always goes for me and nobody...
But that's not true!
Yesterday! Remember, Mom, remember you agreed not to interrupt.
When we're playing tag, she always goes for me and nobody else.
And how does that make you feel?
Mad.
So you feel mad because when you guys are playing tag, she only goes after you and nobody else?
Yeah.
What can you do to try and solve this problem?
Well, if he couldn't always tag...
That's what he can do, but what can you try and do?
Well, I guess I could not always go after him.
Okay. What do you think you could do to solve this problem?
Well, she can absolutely go for all my friends.
That's what she can do. What can you do?
Maybe I can admit when I get it.
So you agree to not always go after him and tag? And you agree to admit when you're it? Do you guys both agree?
Yes.
Congratulations, you solved your problem.
Mediator has been a very important part of my time at Chatham ever since I started in 4th grade. My partner and I go out at 2nd or 3rd grade recess once a week. Problems either come to us or we go to them, but either way, we do our best to make sure that however big or small the problem is, that it gets solved. One of the reasons I love being a mediator is getting to be a role model for the younger kids. Even if all they're learning is to take turns or share, that can go a long way in their friendships. We always make sure that they are the ones to solve their problems so that next time, they can remember what or what not to do. The mediation program is an amazing program, and I hope it keeps growing for years and years to come. Thank you for having us present tonight.
Any comments or questions for the Chatham Park mediators?
Can you guys come to my house? I would love it to have with my three boys.
I just wanted to say conflict resolution is an important skill to take all the way through adulthood, and it's great to see you utilizing and learning it now. I also just wanted to comment, I love your acknowledgement that a problem might not seem like a big deal to you, but your understanding that it is a big deal to the person who's experiencing it, and that's also a really important skill. It's a great program.
And once again, we have amazing students in this district who show a lot of us grown-ups the way that we could do better and learn from you. So thank you for that wonderful demonstration and talking about this important program.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
You guys did great.
Yeah. So, I will allow our younger students to leave the meeting before we get on with the rest of our agenda.
Let's begin here about bonding.
Have a good night. Thanks.
Thank you.
Great job! All right, there's some room for folks who were in the hallway. They can come on in. Next item on our agenda is the time for public comment pertaining to items on tonight's agenda. The board values public comment as an essential component of school governance that adds information for the board's deliberation of the important and complex matters that come before it. Public comment is an opportunity for members of the community to address the board. While the school district's business is conducted in public and in open meetings according to the Sunshine Act, this is not a meeting with the public, and public comment is not a question-and-answer period. Our meetings provide an opportunity to model good government and civic engagement for our students. Our public comment is divided into two sections. This first section is for comments on tonight's agenda. The agenda is published on our school district website in the School Board section under Board Docs. Residents of the township may, in advance of the meeting, sign up to make public comment by emailing publiccomment@haverfordsd.net. In order to give everyone an equal opportunity to speak, and per our board policy, you will have three minutes to address the board. At the three-minute point, a timer will sound, and you will be asked to conclude your remarks. Please begin your comments by stating your name and confirming whether you are a resident of Haverford Township. If you have materials to distribute, please leave them at the end of the board table. Your name and the topic of your comments will be recorded in the meeting minutes, and your presentation is being broadcast and recorded as part of the meeting. If appropriate, an administrator will follow up with speakers to discuss or respond to issues raised. We had one person sign up for this portion of public comment, and that is Helene Conroy Smith.
Good evening. My name's Helene Conroy Smith. I live here in Haverford. I have some questions about why we are paying Robert Half recruiters to provide administrative and supportive staffing. This month's payment for $20,768, while August 3rd, 2022 payment was $11,286.89 for someone on leave. Why is this huge expense for Haverford School District? I think the public should understand that SDHT has multiple contracts for staffing and recruiting that provide the school district with candidates for positions. On 9/22/22, we paid Appington School District $12,000 for membership into the Penn Catalyst Program DCEE, which memberships include recruitment for K-12 staffing. We also pay NEMNET and Talent Ed for hiring recruitment, along with paying into DCIU to receive invites to hosted DCIU education-based job fairs and assistance. When is the school district hiring someone for the position? And when will we stop paying for a variety of staffing agencies? Taxpayer money is not unlimited, and probably our budget is bloated since it seems that we have much money to spend on repeated contracts. On the agenda, there's a resolution for a legal contract. On December 5th, 2022, we signed a contract with Whistler Pearlstein for services including concluded in that contract. Due to the highly specialized nature, employee benefits, property tax assessment appeals, and real estate matters will be paid at the rate of $200 per hour for the year 2023. Tonight's resolution states the School District of Haverford Township is soliciting proposals for qualified law firms to represent the district in the capacity of special counsel for real estate property tax assessment matters. How much are you allowing lawyers to charge the stakeholders? Why another contract related to real estate assessments when we're already paying Whistler Pearlstein? We had also invested in special counsel to waste our money. On August 12th, 2021, at the Finance Committee meeting, it was admitted that 2020, there was a reassessment year, and the reassessment was to be revenue-neutral by law. This means, according to your records, you wasted over $100,000 of our taxpayer funds in legal fees to gain no additional tax revenue for those targeted appeals. You hired an attorney firm, and you gave them legal hours regarding the tax assessments that should have been settled. Now, you're creating another resolution to contract out. Delaware County and the Township of Haverford knew this assessment was illegal and gracefully bowed out of the suit. Yet, the money that was to be used for our children in this town was thrown out the window to pay for legal fees for yet another suit. At some point, we, the taxpayers, need to question where our money's going. What is the purpose of another contract? Again, somebody needs to be watching. You need to be fiscally responsible. That's what you were voted in for.
The next item of the agenda is our board committee reports, and Dr. Laura Crispin will report on our Curriculum and Pupils Services Committee.
Thanks. So, the Curriculum and Pupils Service Committee met on February 6th. First, we started with a presentation by Dr. Stephen Butts, who is the Director of Career and Technical Education at the DCIU. And he presented an overview of their programs. The Delaware County Technical School, DCTS, programs include 21 secondary programs across two campuses. They currently have 1,165 students enrolled, and they're projecting an increase of about, up to about 1,300 students for next year. They also have a practical nursing program for adult students, and they're working on developing the new Teacher Preparation Academy at their Austin campus that will encourage and begin teaching high school students to become teachers. That program, I think all of us were sort of excited about that because it's something that we've been talking about with respect to the Grow Your Own program here at Haverford. That program is a two-year pathway. Typically, it includes basic courses that would be first-year college courses like human development, education systems, and then also some classroom observations. Currently, Haverford students attending the DCTS, we have about 90 Haverford High students attending, and our students have won... and our students have won numerous awards across recent years, including the PA Future Health Professionals Medal winners, um, the Skills USA PA Regional Medal winners, and the NTHS inductees. Um, applications are ongoing. The materials are available on the DCIU website, which is dciu.org slash DCTS. They did have open houses last week, and the deadline for applying is February twenty-eighth, but later applications submitted could um be accepted but may result in a waitlist. Um, there was a lot of discussion, um, and information presented about the calendar and what goes into generating the calendar. Um, just um, I won't go into all the details of that. Um, it was a it was a great presentation from Dr. Rusi, Dr. Rushee, and a good discussion. Um, but generally, the PDE requires a hundred and eighty instructional days. Um, when the district builds the calendar here, um, they build in four extra days so that the calendar doesn't change, and that creates a dependable schedule for parents and guardians to plan for. Um, teachers are contracted to work a hundred and ninety-two days, which includes student days and in-service days. Um, and also important to note that there are other collective bargaining agreements with requirements as well, not just teachers. Um, there are certain days that are not considered for instructional days, like Thanksgiving, because nobody would come to school on Thanksgiving, so that's gonna be a day that, um, you know, would naturally be a a school closure day. Um, and then typically, we're also closed on election days in May and November because most of our buildings, if not all of them, are used as polling places. Um, historically, the district starts on the Tuesday after Labor Day as a longstanding practice and tries to end on either a Thursday or a Friday, not a Monday. Um, so those are a lot of the different constraints that are um placed on the district when coming up with the calendar. Um, two calendar options were presented in very preliminary format for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which feels like a long way away. Um, first drafts that we saw include instructional days and teacher days, along with the holidays that the district um has typically been open, and the district has been reviewing data for excused absences related to religious holidays to determine there if there are significant absences. Um, and that is gonna be sort of an ongoing um review to see if there are other days that um need to be considered as a a school closure day. And then our final presentation, um, was an approach to literacy at the elementary level. Sandy Connolly presented the science of reading and how that is um how that is done at the elementary level for ELA at Haverford. Um, the science, uh, excuse me, shared reading was an important component to developing listening comprehension in early grades. Students learn decoding, phonological awareness, sight recognition, vocabulary knowledge, background knowledge, language structures, literacy knowledge, and verbal reasoning. And there is time for ELA both in the ELA time block and then also with more individualized instruction through the MTSS time. Um, ELA underwent an audit in the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, and from that audit, um, foundations was adopted for K and one in the twenty seventeen school year, and then in the second grade in the twenty eighteen school year, Hegarty was added um a little bit later, and then um decodable readers and geodes was added in twenty twenty-one, and there was a really nice presentation um about what the difference is between all of these different um reading activities and instructional materials, so that was helpful. Um, higher grades, they've included more text analysis, um, using AIMS Web and MAP Growth um for reading. These are the assessment tools to gather data on students' ELA skills and their needs, um, and that can be used for MTSS placements and other um assessment. Um, and then there are multiple supports for students who are struggling struggling to read, including MTSS. Um, and a new ELA audit cur of the curriculum begins in the fall. Um, and then just two informational items. Um, coming to the board soon will be a renewal of the system for teacher evaluations, and then a public service announcement. Um, homework information will be coming from classroom teachers to parents and guardians for third, fourth, and fifth grade very soon. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And always my reminder, it was a long meeting, I felt like it was a fairly long meeting, but it was very informational. Um, and I know there have been a lot of uh questions from public about uh calendar items, so that was, if you weren't there and you haven't seen it, I would definitely recommend you go back to that recording and hear some of the discussion and um constraints and how the calendar is made specifically, so.
All right, well, thank you for your thorough summary. And we also had a finance and facilities committee meeting, and Dave Schwartz will report on that.
All right, thanks. So a very short construction update, because a lot of our projects are being closed out. The um Linwood construction is now officially closed out. I believe we are still awaiting approval from the County Conservation District, but we have um finished eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars under budget, which is which is great news, and that is not by accident. We have very, very good technical staff, um, and owners reps working for us, and during COVID especially, coming in that far under budget, I think is 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 extraordinary, so we're very happy about that. Um, high school phase one is also closed out, uh, with the remaining funds there. We're transferred over to high school phase two, which is in the closed-out stages, still waiting some permits from the County Conservation District and uh and others. Um, Chad and Cooper Town, they are both about seventy percent done with the HVAC systems. The chillers are installed, the plumbing has uh is is being installed somewhat on second shift. Second shift is um shift takes place after schools out, and phase two will be completed during during the summer, as will the roof on Cooper Town. So that's the quick update on 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 construction. We're getting very close to the end of this kind of capital improvement cycle, if you will, so. Um, that's a little bit of a smoothing that. The other thing that that was discussed was finance. I often a lot during my time here on uh on on school board the past three years. This is one that still befuddles me to to some degree. Fortunately, Jamie's here, um, fro from a P F M who will, I mean, Jamie, if I hop up there, I'll I I will muddle through this the best I I I can the summary, you can then correct me, I guess. And any questions, I ask you to direct to 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 the guy who who knows. But the the long and short of it is that um we are looking to to refinance some of our bonding. There is approximately, there there is some new money, about five point eight million dollars to finish existing projects. Uh, one point three million for our kind of rolling bus um purchasing and conversion to um to propane. About twenty-nine million or so in principal. And the I guess the 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 idea here is that there we we refinance a lot of this, moving it from a um a swap rate to a bond rate. Okay. You're nodding, that's that's a good thing. And I guess by my is it's gonna it's gonna save us a few dollars because the rates now are at a spot where transferring them would actually be 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 cost benefit. Um, the other thing is that we are gonna be asked to um vote on a on a parameters agreement this evening, which basically we have done in the past for bonding. Just set some parameters and gives us some flexibility to um to P F M to
Do what we need to do.
Do what you got, do what what y'all do, and uh, you know, it 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 rather than waiting, you know, coming for the board, trying to get to try to get on the agenda and vote on it, gives you the ability, I I I assume, to do things in a bit more of a, you know, kind of a real-time effort. And so the total bond agreement that that you'll see in parameters is forty-two million, which is not what we're gonna probably borrow, but we have it at that level to give flexibility, and Jamie, if I got anything wrong, please feel free to
You're doing great.
That's all I got, so, I mean, if there's anything else that uh you wanna add, please feel free, and then I guess we'll have questions.
Yeah, I'll I'll I'll, you did a great job. So the 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 big picture here is there tonight is there's a parameters resolution that's on the agenda. It's been duly advertised uh in the Times, uh, whoever that is around here. Um, and it will be asked for you tonight to take a look at that and hopefully approve it. The concept is simple, um, we want flexibility to allow us to go through the process to issue debt. Uh, that will do three things, which you've highlighted. Uh, one is refinance an existing two thousand nine issue. Uh, that is a variable rate issue that has a hedge agreement attached to it. Uh, because of the market right now, we're actually in a positive uh place where, should we refinance it, we'll be able to terminate the necessary documents and allow us to issue fixed-rate bonds, which will both provide us a savings, as well as make things more simple uh going forward for administration and for some ongoing costs. In addition, we'll be allowed to lock in interest rates related to uh the the balance of the capital projects, as you described, and as well as handle the the buses. Uh, overall, we will not be extending any of the debt associated with the refinancing, and uh the overall uh balance and final maturity of the debt will be twenty thirty-eight, so it'll be about fifteen years from today, which is within range of the useful lives of of projects. Uh, the this is really the balance of the projects, as we talked about. Uh, that we've done a good job of the last few years getting everything done, and given that your your team's done a very good job of getting the projects done in an efficient manner, we think this transaction will kind of finish it up and and fit within the budget. So that's the highlights. I think you did a good job, but I'm certainly happy to answer any questions.
And Jamie, I know those of us who actively participate in the finance and facility committee know you, but could you just
Oh, sure.
yourself for the record.
Yeah, sure. Uh, my name is Jamie Slusenger. I I've served as the independent municipal advisor for the for the school district. I've been working with the uh the district since twenty-ten, uh, and uh we've done a number of transactions to both refinance and borrow money. Uh, and I serve as your fiduciary. I I will point to to Dan O'Brien, he uh his firm, RBC Capital Mark, is gonna serve as the underwriter on the transaction, uh, so they're the people that get the people to buy the bonds, um, and the investors. So we'll work together with uh the balance of the team to get this completed within the next month or so. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That's all I got.
All right, well, thank you for your board reports. The next item of our agenda is for finance and facilities, and it begins with item A is the bill list. I will accept a motion to approve dispersments for payment totaling nine hundred fifty-seven thousand four hundred forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
Schwartz moved.
Chris, in second.
Moved in second, did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill list is approved. Item B is for change orders. I will accept a motion to accept the recommendation of the project architect K C B A and Associates, Inc., and owner's representative C B Development Services, Inc., and authorize the change orders totaling four thousand five hundred seventeen dollars as listed.
McKay moved.
For a second.
There is a
Snodgrass for it.
King or moved in second, did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Change orders are approved. Item C is a request for proposals. I will accept a motion to authorize proper officers of the board to prepare and advertise documents to request proposals for the legal services related to real estate property tax assessment matters.
Snodgrass moved.
Crispin, second.
Moved in second, did any discussion?
Um, can can someone just talk briefly about what um legal services this that we're hoping to get that would be different than what we already have?
I think even before that, let's talk about what a request for for proposal is, just so that everyone understands that, just a little bit, you know, um. And specifically because we are a public district, we can uh
We can look to the solicitor.
That would be great.
Sure, so what the motion is doing is approving the administration to advertise and ask for uh proposals for legal services related to your uh real estate tax assessment matters. Currently, um, you have a firm in media that has been representing the district on an annual contract in tax assessment appeal matters. Um, as was pointed out, the solicitors agreement also includes tax assessment appeal matters. Uh, this is a process that you often use when seeking uh service providers to ask the general community of, in this case, law firms that might serve this role, to submit proposals as to who would handle the work, how much it would cost, what their model would be, so you, as the board, can engage in due diligence to select the firm that you believe would best serve the the district's purposes.
And when we do request for proposals, do we both send out the proposals to law firms that we already work with? Um, and we advertise them?
That is one way to do it. Some some districts simply mail them to various firms. Some districts only advertise, and some districts do both. All three options are acceptable.
Ms. Saxa, do you know whether uh what what we do in our district?
Yeah, we have advertised, and we are sending out to the um solicitors with whom we already work.
Okay, thank you.
And we're discussing this in the context of um legal matters, but I am aware that we follow similar protocols when we might be considering a new auditor or other service providers, is that correct?
That's true.
That answer your question?
I think so, thank you.
Any other discussion on this matter? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. Item D is a resolution authorizing moving forward with the incurrence of non-electoral debt. I will accept a motion to approve the attached parameters resolution for the twenty twenty-three bonds by the Haverford Township School District.
Schwartz moved.
Vitaly, second.
Moved in second, did any discussion? So this provides the refunding opportunity to lock in a fixed rate, um terminating the swap and and the legal agreements around that, and get some new money that we will use for finishing out the Chatham and Cooper Town projects and enhancing our bus fleet.
And this agreement will also provide some cost savings as well, so it's economically uh efficient.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor of the parameters resolution? Oh, I'm sorry, this is a roll call, one oh. Ms. Q, we're gonna ask you to call our names again.
Dr. Crispin?
Yes.
Dr. King?
Yes.
Dr. McKay?
Yes.
Mr. Schwartz?
Yes.
Ms. Vitaly?
Yes.
Ms. Snodgrass?
Yes.
Ms. Wedeman?
Yes.
O to seven to zero with two absent.
Yes, the motion is approved, thank you. Item E is the DCIU non-public Title I agreement. I will welcome a motion to approve the agreement between the Delaware County Intermediate Unit and the School District of Haverford Township for Title I services for non-public participation in the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year at a cost of thirteen thousand four hundred ninety-nine dollars.
Crispin, move.
Schwartz, second.
Moved in second, did any discussion? Ms. Saxa, could you just explain a little bit about uh the district's requirement to provide services to students who aren't enrolled in our schools?
Sure, this is a federal program funding, uh, and it comes through uh the federal government, through the state, to us, and part of the requirements uh in receiving this funding is that we also provide services to non-public students who are attending schools that are in our area. Uh, and so there are some qualifying things that make them eligible for that. Um, and then, once we have determined which the number of students for whom we have to provide those services, we then look around and see who can provide them, and we contract with the IU. Uh, the IU actually goes in and provides either reading and or math remediation for students. Uh, they then provide some um information back to us about the success of of that remediation, and we can evaluate whether or not they're doing the job that we have paid them to do. Uh, and this is the contract that we are entering into to provide those required services uh to students in our non-public schools in the area.
Thank you. Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. In section seven of our agenda for Human Resources, item A is retirements and resignations. I will accept a motion to accept the retiring and resignations as listed.
Crispin, move. Snodgrass, second.
Moved in second, did any discussion?
And then Ms. Martha.
There's a few really long-time employees here, so thank you for your service. Forty-three years is a really long time, so thank you.
Yes, we have a lead garage mechanic and a a teacher at the high school um with forty-three years and twenty-four years respectively, retiring at the end of the school year. And then um our own um board secretary and business manager, after nearly two years working with the district, has announced that she will be retiring at the end of April, so we're not saying goodbye now, and we are looking forward to helping you helping us get a little bit more through our budget preparation process, but um congratulations on on your upcoming retirement.
Thank you for making the budget presentations um understandable, and um
And kind of enjoyable.
Yeah, right, even the seventh time that we watch it for that year.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item B is a non-acceptance of appointment. I will accept a motion to approve the following non-acceptance of appointment.
Crispin, move. King, second.
Moved in second, did any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is for appointments. I will accept a motion to approve the following appointments as listed below, contingent upon receipt of all necessary clearances, including one Act one sixty-eight of twenty fourteen.
Crispin, move. Crispin move.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Fun to see all the different activities that are happening, those coaches and sponsors. Cooper Town Eco Action Club, High School Science Olympia, we've got Varsity Sports. It's very exciting, lots of variety, love that.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any any opposed? Motion is approved. Item D is for leaves of the absence. I will accept a motion to approve the following leave requests.
Crispin move.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Under the pupil services portion of our agenda, item A is international exchange student. I will accept a motion to approve the enrollment and registration of an international exchange student at Haverford High School for the 2023-2024 school year.
Crispin move.
Vitale second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
You know, we have a policy for this.
I was gonna say.
Hot off the presses.
Hot off the presses. So we last revised and adopted a policy December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. And with that policy, we adopted for the first time AR 202.1, eligibility of non resident students, international students.
AR.
My understanding, Ms. Saxa, is that all of the steps as outlined in the little bit lengthy administrative regulation of policy number 202.1 were followed here?
It's true, our pupil services department worked carefully to follow the new policy. It was nice to test drive it so quickly.
It's great. Wow, look at that, policy in action. I appreciate it. Welcome, or as long as it passes.
Next school year, yes.
Do we know, do we know where the student is coming from?
The student's coming from Germany.
Awesome, that's great. Cool.
It is, yeah, nice to have this opportunity for our school community to to benefit from that, and also nice to see our policies being, you know, used and implemented in a way that benefits the school community.
Maybe, and maybe this is just a dream, but maybe somebody went on and looked at what the policy was and then said, this is what needs to happen. It could happen. It could have happened here. We'd love to see it, thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item B is out of district educational services contract. I will accept a motion to approve the following educational agreement for a student attending out of district placement for the 2022-23 school year.
King moved. Crispin second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. In section nine of our agenda on curriculum and instruction, item A is student educational excursions. I will accept a motion to ratify and approve the following student educational excursions as listed below.
Crispin move.
Schwartz seconds.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
This is a great, I I I guess the girls indoor team was invited to invitational based on national rankings. So I believe that was, as Erin indicated earlier, Fords are are killing it on the on the sports scene and national stage. So it's great to see them get rewarded with this.
If I could just read out loud what the coach described here. The the girls four by eight hundred relay received a special invitation to what is considered the most prestigious and oldest since nineteen oh eight indoor track meet in the world. This is not a meet we could put on our schedule as it was only by special invitation, which was done recently because of our team's national ranking. So, wow, that's really great.
Yeah.
And if you follow their Instagram, one, be prepared for a lot of blasts because this the track and field team is just crushing it, and so there's a lot to celebrate. But I understand that that four by eight relay broke the school record and came in third at this very impressive competition. So fours are fast. And, yeah, so this is an example of we are being asked to ratify something that already happened. The other one on here is that we currently have five students attending the PMEA regional competition at Westchester as as we speak these next couple days. So some great accomplishments there. And then the swimming and diving team is giving us a little bit of notice for an upcoming meet, so that's the third one on here.
District runs swimming championships, looks like, so yes, very good job, Fords, keep it up.
Educational excursions are always fun ones to have on the agenda. Any other discussions or comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. The next section of our agenda that has a topic is other items. Item A is DCIU Board of Directors Candidate Resolution. I will accept a motion to approve the resolution nominating Kristen Larson to serve as a member of the Delaware County Intermediate Bor- Intermediate Unit Board of Directors for a term commencing July first, two thousand twenty-three, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-six.
Schwartz moved.
Snodgrass second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Thank you very much for taking this on this role. Dr. Larson is not here tonight, but she is aware that this is happening. And, you know, we're very grateful as a board to have her take on this role and report back with DCIU. So continue our partnership with them.
Any other comments or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved with our thanks to Dr. Larson. Item B is the ARP E S S E R Health and Safety Plan Update. I will accept a motion to approve the ARP E S R Health and Safety Plan as discussed at the February second, two thousand twenty-three board meeting.
Snodgrass moved.
Crispin second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
No changes.
I say, look forward to the day when we don't have to do this anymore, but it is not today.
Right, no changes, and I think, you know, as when we had talked about this plan six months ago, it was looking for COVID to become one of the communicable diseases that unfortunately schools need to manage and mitigate and deal with in different ways. And so it largely now follows falls under the policy we already have in place and practices the schools have long had for dealing with illnesses in schools. And then it largely says that we will follow mandates and requirements if imposed by the state or our county health department, and there have been no changes at that level, so no changes in our plan. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item C is Bryn Mawr Playfield Association Resolution. I will accept a motion to approve the resolution naming nominating Antoinette Snodgrass to serve as a candidate to fill the vacant directorship number two seat on the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association.
McKay moved.
Schwartz second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Could someone provide some context for this? Like, what are you signing up for here?
Sure. So my understanding of, oh, okay, I would love for you to do this.
Yes, this is a bit of a history lesson within the township.
Okay.
We've learned that what is commonly known as the polo fields is owned by a nonprofit organization corporation called the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association. It was formed in nineteen forty-four. It's governed by a board of directors of five seats. When that corporation was founded, seat number two is to be, the person who holds seat number two is to be appointed or nominated by the School District of Haverford Township. We've been notified that there's a vacancy. They've asked us to appoint or nominate an individual to serve Director Number Two position. So that is what this resolution is for, is to appoint someone who will then have to be elected by the Board of the Bryn Mawr Playfield Association to serve. You're simply nominating Ms. Snodgrass to be a candidate for that position.
Are we aware of how long there's been a vacancy?
We are not aware of how long there's been a vacancy.
It has not been an active.
I think it's been a while.
It has been a while, yes. And and just additional history, the the five seats, one is nominated by the Commissioners of Haverford, one is nominated by the Commissioners of Lower Marion, one is the School District of Haverford, one is the Bryn Mawr Horse Show Association, which now is part of the Devon Horse Show, as as we understand. And the final seat is appointed by Mr. H Gates Lloyd, who was the individual in nineteen forty-four who donated the land. And since he is now deceased, it's nominated and voted on by the four sitting members. But again, all all you're doing is nominating Ms. Snodgrass to serve in that position.
This was a fascinating lesson that we all learned. Learned that this existed and that that we had a role in it. But Ms. Snodgrass, thank you very much for taking this on.
Excited for this role.
Yeah, sure.
And is it, is it correct to say that the reason that this has gotten some attention and interest in reconvening is there are some proposed uses for the polo fields that they would like the board to act on or enable to happen?
I think so. I think that is the reason we were approached to fill this vacancy. We'll just clarify that this board, there's no action for this board to take on any, anything that may have been read and out in the press as to what may or may not be happening with the polo fields.
Beyond nominating Ms. Snodgrass to sit on the board.
Be a candidate.
I'm waiting for you.
All right, well, thank you for that explanation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is approved, thank you. Item twelve is our of our agenda is for public comments on items not pertaining to tonight's agenda, and we had two people sign up. The first is Mr. Todd Hall.
Good evening, my name is Todd Hall. I reside in Haverford Township. I'm here to speak tonight about the introduction speech to public comment, and thank you for amending the speech. Just a few notes on items that remain in it for your consideration. The statement that this is not a meeting with the public is not true. You're elected representatives of the public. You make decisions about the public's money for the children's of Haverford Township that are in the public, making decisions based on public policy. In the event you disagree with that statement, and I hope you wouldn't, there's ten or so people here from the public. We're here, we're with you. And also, the statement made at the beginning of the opening to public comment that it's not a question and answer period. I used to actually hear that and think that makes sense, there's a lot to get through. But when I reached out to the Office of Open Records with my overall concerns, they advised the following from their website, quote, "Can the public ask questions during the comment period?" Yes, although members of the agency are not required to provide an answer, it is a good practice to do so whenever possible. Answering questions can demonstrate a commitment to helping constituents, and in many cases, answering questions informally at a public meeting can reduce future requests under the right to know law, which saves both time and money for the agency and the commenter or requester. End of the quote. Now, I understand the board does say at the end of the meeting, you know, that we will get back to you, but there's no responses provided during the meeting. And when it said we'll get back to you, the situation, you know, here is that if there's a decision about the board governance, there's not really a provision for that. It's stated that an administrator will get back to you. But comments and concerns at board meetings are sometimes raised about the governance of the board. Feedback during public comment from this board occurred in meetings in two thousand sixteen. As recently as in two thousand twenty, comments were allowed for for individuals who did not sign up in advance if time permitted. So I'm just kind of wondering what changed and what the rationale was to limit public participation. We do know there was much excitement and animation during the time of pandemic restrictions, but that time is over. So I encourage you to take the guidance from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania that establishes the position you're in and serves the citizens of the district. Thank you.
The second speaker we have is Ms. Helene Conroy Smith.
On a very positive note, I was really glad to see that Great Minds received a payment of thirty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars and seventy-five cents for geodes. And if people don't know what that is, geodes are knowledge building books for emerging and developing readers aligned with developmental stages of the Wilson Foundations Program. Foundations has been in the school district for over five years. I'm happy that to see kids are able to access books that are on their level, and it matches where they are in the classroom. I know this is only a kindergarten set, but my own children read books that were incorrectly leveled in classroom libraries since over the years, the leveling system has changed. Haverford has adopted and used various reading programs throughout the past twenty years as my children have been through this school district. And the leveling system changed. Some of them included Fontis and Pennell, Scholastics, and now Wilson. And so the lev- as they vary, it's important to note that things change, and I understand it's difficult for some teachers to go on their classroom libraries and to make those changes. Geodes is an investment to ensure that our children access books on their correct reading level, and our children here in Haverford Township have the right to learn how to read. And I'm really glad for that. And I was one of those parents that pushed for phonics program way back when because I have two daughters with dyslexia. So this is near and dear to my heart, and I'd love to see more things that are paid for for our children, math, writing, science, reading. Thank you.
The next portion of our agenda is for board reports. I'll start with Mr. Schwartz.
Thanks, yeah. Don't have a whole lot to report, although just on a quick personal note, one thing I do want to indicate, you know, we have great kids in this district, and that was evidenced today by by students at Chatham. And just a real quick note here for my, on, I said, on a personal level. My, I got a call today about two forty-five on my cellphone from from my fourteen year old's phone, and the voice on the other end was not hers, and it said, hi, do you know whose phone this is? We we happened to find it. I'm like, where'd you find this phone? Like, at the middle of school. I'm like, oh, my God, a fourteen year old cannot function without this phone. Thank you very much. I don't I don't know the student, her name was Avery, I believe, but but on the off chance that that her parents are are watching, thank you, thank you, thank you. My daughter was running back to the school in absolute tears in the rain, freaking out that their phone was gone. Went to the office, the students returned it. It's just, it was just very great to to actually see that happen, see, you know, our kids looking out for one another and, you know, not trying to take the phone and it was, you know, brace it and sell it or anything. They brought it right back, and I I it was, it was, it was very good to see that. They called, very courteous, and loved, you know, loved the kids in this district. It was a very nice little pick-me-up this afternoon. I pass.
No comment. No report, thanks.
So I have a little bit of reports to do because I've missed a couple meetings. So I just want to report back that I was able to attend the wellness committee in January. We had student representatives at this meeting, which was really great to hear directly from the students, and that there are now new student-led wellness programs within the high school, which is also really great. And as Erin had mentioned earlier, there's a wellness block each month at the high school, and tomorrow is February, so that's pretty great. I know my kids are thinking about what they're going to be doing, and you had mentioned what you're going to be doing. I really appreciate the deliberate efforts of staff and students throughout the district to prioritize wellness. I also enjoyed attending the PTO meetings of both Manoa and Cooper Town. So that was really great to be able to meet with parents and talk with them. And I also attended the legislative meeting for Delaware County. Mostly, there are dates just for the board to know and make note of. At this particular meeting, we had ten districts represented from Delaware County, which was pretty great. So the PSBA Advocacy Day in Hurstburg is April eighteenth. There's also a legislative breakfast on May nineteenth. It's a great opportunity for board members to meet with the legislators that govern our area. And then also, just the governor's budget will be announced on March seventh, which we all know will start the process that will affect our budget. So look out for what that will be. The Senate is currently in recess until February twenty-seventh, so there wasn't a lot of reporting back at the meeting for things that were happening. But to go off of something that Dr. Crispin had mentioned, there is a potential for the state to develop a program that will be deliberately helping high school students work towards a career in teaching. It currently remains in the assessment process, but it'd be really wonderful if that moves forward. But in the meantime, DCIU has their own teacher academy that is moving forward, as Dr. Crispin had mentioned earlier. So great things happening in our in our county.
Thank you. No report?
Just touch on two things very briefly. First, there was a very big court decision that came out on school funding that I'm sure Mr. Feinberg would like to discuss, and he's probably, you know, very upset that he's not here, and I'm not going to try and steal that thunder. But I will just say. But I will just say that it, you know, has the potential to affect us, as well as every other district in the Commonwealth. And there is absolutely nothing that we as a Board can do right now. And we, along with the public, will watch what happens in the courts and what happens with the legislature and the governor beyond that. Second, for anyone planning to attend the next policy committee, it was originally scheduled for February twenty-first. There was a scheduling conflict, and now it will be March sixth in the boardroom at 7:00 PM. So, we will see you there.
Thank you. Knowing that Mr. Feinberg was not able to be here, I also was going to share some news. And it was also talked about at the Delaware County Legislative Committee, the ruling on February seventh, that the Commonwealth Court ruled that Pennsylvania's current school funding system is unconstitutional. There was a case filed in 2014. It went to trial in November of 21. There was four months of courtroom activity and pledges, but they made the case that Pennsylvania's current school funding system denies students in low-wealth and low-income school districts the quality of public education that they deserve, and that is guaranteed by the Pennsylvania Constitution. So, it is a big win. It will hopefully promote education justice. It does not come with any answers on how the funding formula will change, or, you know, what will happen. There's potential for appeals. At this point, it would need to be appealed to the Supreme Court, I think, is the next one, so...
Supreme Court of Pennsylvania.
So, we're not sure what would, what path is going to be taken, but it is a strong statement in support of more equitable school funding. Mr. Feinberg was one who led the charge for this Board to pass a resolution in support of fair funding of public education in Pennsylvania, and the Board did pass that resolution. We are fortunate to live in a district that does not have the same struggles as some neighboring districts. William Penn was one who was a lead plaintiff in the case. But our district would also serve to benefit from more funds going into Pennsylvania's existing fair funding formula, which recognizes growing enrollment, but that only right now covers a portion of the funding that we get. And again, our budget is eighty percent funded locally and like eighteen percent from the state. So, more state money from a state that is near the bottom of the rankings and how it funds public education would be a welcome outcome of this and would serve to benefit our district in part, but moreover, benefit millions of students across the state. So, look forward to hearing more on that. I will also say that another thing that I think Mr. Feinberg would comment on as part of a solution for the state funding issue is a fix to the charter funding. This Board has also passed a resolution of that. Now, with over ninety percent of districts across the state of Pennsylvania, all sizes, all geographies, there is a lot of interest in trying to fix that funding, again, for more equitable outcomes for all of our public school students. And the other thing I will say is I got to be at the Central League Championships, watching the girls' basketball team win. It was very exciting. There was a great turnout of students in the stands, staff, and lots of support for the Fords, so we look forward to them continuing to have a good run far into districts and keep hearing about all the other good athletic achievements and go Fords. With that, there was not an executive session between the last board meetings, so we are up to the moment that we can adjourn. The next regular public board meeting is scheduled to be held on March second, 2023, at 7:30 PM in the boardroom of the Oakmont Administration Building. And with that, our business is concluded, and I welcome a motion to adjourn. Crispin move?
Snodgrass second.
Right, we're adjourned. Thank you.